The Patent Township's Board of Supervisors meeting Wednesday, May 8th at 5:31 to order. We welcome all especially new Patent Township residents to the Patent Township community, a place for all. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is announcements. Are there any announcements at this time?
There are not.
Okay. Additions to the posted agenda. Are there any addition items to be added to the posted agenda at this time?
There are not.
I would like to move the proclamation for the Asian American Pacific Islander up and also the proclamation for CADA, their 50th anniversary, up two spots. So, public comments. Residents and taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a Pacific agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate that it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Next on the agenda is the proclamations. And the first proclamation I'm going to say is the proclamation designating May as Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month.
Would you like me to read that?
No, Betsy's going to read it, but you want to introduce it?
Certainly. This is proclaiming May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we have some representatives from the community in the audience as well.
Okay. Betsy, would you like to?
Yes, certainly. So, this is a sincere, a deep honor for me to read this, not only because I know the two people in the audience quite well and quite a bit of respect and wonderful feelings for them, but also because my two daughters also are from China. Pardon me. A proclamation designating May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, whereas Congress enacted a law in 1992 annually designating the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month to celebrate the influence and contributions of those of Asian and Pacific Islanders' origin to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And whereas some Patent Township residents who hail originally from these many diverse countries on the Asian continent and the many Pacific Islands are recent immigrants, and others are first, second, third, fourth, or fifth generation Americans. And whereas those of American and Pacific Islander origin are the largest racial minority group in Patent Township, making up 11% of our population, and have enriched the ethnic and social fabric of our township with their diverse languages, cultures, religious beliefs. And whereas those of Asian and Pacific Islander origin contribute to and enrich our community with their creativity, enterprise, and skill as professors, scientists, technologists, doctors, students, entrepreneurs, artist, workers, writers, investors, elected officials, as we have here, philanthropists, and more, building and supporting the vibrant and resilient economy in Patent Township. And whereas those of Asian and Pacific Islander origin are our beloved friends and family, our cherished neighbors, and valued members of Patent Township, where we remain committed to embracing and accepting all of our residents from diverse backgrounds. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Patent Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Patent Township, and encourages all Patent Township residents to celebrate the history and culture of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their vital contributions to our township, our country, our Commonwealth, and our county, our Commonwealth and our country. Sorry about that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve proclamation? Proclamation from Supervisor Abrams. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The proclamation is adopted. Judge Han or my colleague, Councilwoman.
Whoops. So, good evening, I guess. And my name's Nalini Krishn Guti, and I'm a resident of State College Barrow. I want to thank Chair Pamela Robb, Board of Supervisors, and Manager Amy Farkas for continuing this tradition of passing this proclamation in May. It certainly means a lot. I also want to give thanks on behalf of our local community group, the Panapita Circle, of which Judge Han and I are members. We've stood here before representing them. And we continue to try to elevate the voices of the Apida community, Asian Pacific Islander Dacey Americans in our region. And I want to share a recent example. We collaborated or the Penn State, we supported the Penn State Apida Caucus students and held the second Asian Heritage Month in downtown, Apida Heritage Month in downtown State College and Martin Luther King Plaza and Fraser Street. And we were joined in, other collaborators were the Barrow State College and Paul Robbs and Cultural Center. This was done on April 20th and was done to mark this month that we are proclaiming today. It was done earlier because students at Penn State leave. They're not here in May. And what I wanted to say about that day, it was really amazing. It was a very, very windy day. And in spite of the wind, we survived and thrived. There were more than 600 people that came through. It was a celebration of joy. We had vendors, civic organizations like the League of Women Voters, the Democratic Party, Central PA United, the Barrows Planning Department, Racial Equity Commission, all were there. And then there were, you know, organized businesses like The Makery, offering activities for children, Column Crossings, Klow Library, and lots of performances. But I want to highlight here today acts of generosity by local small businesses run by Apida community members. Kuwe Nana donated Indonesian pandan cake. India Pavilion donated samosas and pakoras. Little Seishuan donated vegetable fried rice and vegetable spring rolls. Far Corners donated hundreds of snacks. The Coop was there donating samples of food all day as well as doing live demonstrations. And I really want to elevate these businesses. Some of them have been here more recently, five or six years, and some have been here for decades. And as I, so I want to just, you know, these are not, a lot of times, these small business owners don't have time to come to places and speak about their experiences. And one of the things Panapita Circle did was we interviewed them. We talked to them about what they feel about being in this community, what's their legacy, what has our community done for them. And we hope to highlight all of these on our website soon. But I really, really wanted, you know, to thank them. And as one participant said, the entertainment was great, but the food was awesome. And it only happened because of their generosity. And as I remember them, I just want to thank or remember a couple of other small business owners who passed recently from the Apida community. And for this, I'm going to quote another Panapita member, Vicky Fong. Want to remember Herbert Wong, who passed away on January 26, 2024, at the age of 93. Herb Wong and his wife Teresa opened the first Chinese restaurant on College Avenue in 1970, moved it to North Atherton in 1972, and in 1980 converted it to a wholesale and catering operation, supplying their famous classic egg rolls and other foods such as desserts to many restaurants around the country. Today, according to Vicky Fong, Wong's children continue that operation. Herb was a marine veteran, a Pennsylvania college football player, and a graduate in biology. Another person I want to remember is David Chen, who passed away on December 22nd, 2023, at the age of 78. Again quoting Vicky, David and his wife Julie owned and operated the Golden Walk Restaurant in downtown State College for 30 years. It was located in a house where it's today occupied by standard luxury student housing. And somebody told me recently, these businesses are hubs in our community. Vicky remembers just sitting from '77, the porch of Golden Walk, and becoming a second home for her. We also have a lot of Apida researchers, and I want to, you know, I know that we remember them. And, you know, I know that we sometimes think of Penn State, but I just wanted to elevate all these other individuals who've contributed in our community. And I urge everybody listening to take this month to know your neighbors, to know these businesses, support them, know our history. And also, there are other things happening in Klow Library. May 14th, there's a children's author coming from Texas, Sadia Faruki, who's written the Yasmin books. She'll be speaking there on the evening of the 14th. She's visiting our schools. She's already come here in April, will be here in May. And also, on May 18th, there are educators from Taiwan doing a puppet, glove puppet workshop. So, I encourage everybody to, you know, just use this month to know more about our community. And I want to thank you.
Thank you. My name is Donald Han. I'm a former State College Barrow Council member, former mayor of State College, and currently judge, Magisterial District Judge. I'd like to thank Patent Township for putting the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation on the agenda and, in fact, for voting for its approval. The Asian Pacific American community is a growing community. When I was born in 1964, the census indicated that the Asian Pacific population in America was less than a million. Today, in 2024, the most recent census indicated that the Asian Pacific population in America is over 20 million. However, we are not a monolith. The Asia-Pacific region contains over 50 recognized nation-states with almost 5 billion people, more than half the world's population, consisting of Christians, Muslims, Hindus, and Buddhists, where so many different languages are spoken, such as Arabic, Hindi, Punjabi, Bengali, Indonesian, Chinese, and Japanese. While the region is diverse, it is also divided. Sometimes it is divided into homogeneous nation-states with little knowledge of other nation-states in the areas of Asia and the Pacific. Sometimes it is divided into homogeneous areas within larger nation-states. And sometimes the divisions are all too close, where diversity shares an uncomfortable proximity. Asia and the Pacific is a region where ancient grudges erupt into renewed violence, giving way to new grudges and future violence. What unifies us is our experience in America. We are clearly a minority community here. Our comfort zones are small. Our places of worship and communities where people can talk, the language of their youth are a lot smaller in America than in the old world. In many ways, our smaller numbers and minority status has forced us to assimilate, to leave our comfort zones and engage with the majority. My parents left their families and friends in order to go to a country where most people did not look like them, where most people spoke another language, where they were at a competitive disadvantage in terms of knowledge of the language, culture, literature, et cetera, and where, basically where even popular culture tended to view them with some, their culture with contempt. I think that, why would people, I think there was a question I remember hearing, why would people come into such an environment? Well, the reality is that I think that this community, I think, is very reflective of the larger community of America inasmuch as this is still such a great land of opportunity in terms of education, in terms of employment. And quite frankly, you know, still, it is, while there may be some people who will continue to disdain differences and diversity, I think this is an area, and America still is a country that still welcomes contributions from a wide range of people from around the world. And I think that that is part of the reason why Penn State is such a valuable destination for people who wish to learn from around the world, and why Patent Township and State College are also wonderful welcoming destinations. Unfortunately, we cannot always vouch for everyone. However, I think that Patent Township, and this board, and this township, has done a great job in establishing a welcoming environment. And I think, quite frankly, I think America too. So, once again, and I think that this is one of the signs of such welcoming, I thank you once again, Patent Township, for voting up this, for making May Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we can just hold.
We have the proclamation.
Do you want to take a picture?
Yes.
Elliot, can you be alone?
No.
Helen, you want to go to the school? I'll go to the side because I'll be so busy. English.
Oh.
Elliot and Susan. Judge. Elliot and Susan. Okay, thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Does the board have any comments at this time regarding our proclamation? I just want to say, I remember the Golden Walk. It was my first restaurant that I went to when I got here. And it was such a warm environment, you know, just sitting there and how they treated me coming there, not knowing it was my first time. And I just wish across the board that all our businesses had such a warm relationship to their customers, you know, as we grow as a community, as we grow into a world that doesn't look the same. So, thank you for taking the time out to come. And any other comments? And if not, next on the agenda that I've moved up is honoring CADA, their 50th anniversary.
So, our friends at CADA will celebrate their 50th anniversary on May 17th, and we have Lori Miller from CADA staff here this evening.
It is my honor. Patent Township Board of Supervisors proclamation, a place for all, honoring CADA on their 50th anniversary. Whereas the Center Area Transit Authority has been an integral part of our community for half a century, providing essential transportation services to residents and visitors, whereas CADA's commitment to sustainability, accessibility, and effectiveness has continued significantly to the well-being of our region. Whereas CADA's orange and white buses have become an iconic symbol of the state college connecting neighborhoods, campuses, and beyond. Whereas CADA grew from a humble beginning in 1974 to the current status to a joint municipal authority reflects its resilience and adaptability. And whereas CADA dedicates to serving Penn State University students, faculty, staff has fostered a strong partnership between the university and the community. And whereas CADA Park and Ride Program, Para-Transit Services, and then votive routes have enhanced mobility options for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Patent Township, in conjunction with the surrounding municipalities, hereby celebrates and honors CADA's 50th anniversary on May 17th, 2024. Be it further resolved that we commend CADA staff, drivers, and the leadership for their unwavering commitment to excellence and their role in shaping our vibrant communities to claim this eighth day of May. Lori, do you want to come up?
We got to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got to vote. Sorry. Can I get a motion to approve? Second?
A second.
All right. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Elliot, sorry. No, I just want to, CADA approves to the doubters that it's not transitory.
Thank you, Elliot. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The proclamation has passed and is adopted. Now, Lori, would you like to say a few words?
I would. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation celebrating our 50th anniversary. We're very proud to serve the center region. We're very happy and excited and look forward to our future. And in part of our celebration on Monday, May 20th, we'll be hosting a community celebration at CADA's location out on Whitehall Road. From 3:00 to 7:00 PM, we'll have an opportunity for kids to, and adults, to go through bus number one, which was the first bus in Center County used by CADA. We'll have tours of the facility. We'll have activities for children. They'll be able to go travel in a bus through the bus wash. So, different activities to enjoy. We have some commemorative tokens that we'll be giving out at that event as well. So, a lot of celebration. And we hope to see a lot of you on Monday, May 20th, from 3:00 to 7:00 for our community event. In the morning, at 9:00 AM to 11:00, we're hosting a local state leaders to CADA to celebrate with us as well. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience. And next on our agenda is the proclamation, May 12th to May 18th, as Police Officers Week.
Yes.
Chief, it is my honor to read this. Whereas National Police Week in America was created to honor and recognize the sacrifices and contributions made by police officers in the community, both large and small. Whereas the National Police Week has held every year in May, was created in 1962 through a proclamation issued then by President John F. Kennedy, which designates this week of May, it says 13th through the 19th in 1962. of May, it says 13th through the 19th, in 1962, as Police Week. And whereas our community will always appreciate and commend the risks police officers take every day to ensure our community's laws are properly enforced and the public safety is ensured. And whereas now, more than ever, the community also appreciates and encourages the community, communities' involvement, facilitated by our police officers, to both better serve and instill mutual trust, camaraderie, and positive relationships among the increasing diverse populations in Patent Township. Whereas police truly engage with and serve the public in the most, in the most varied and wide-range manner, and their efforts do not go unnoticed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as 2024 Police Officers Week in Patent Township, to encourage all residents to join the township in recognizing of the services, sacrifices, and efforts of the Patent Township Police Departments, make to better serve our community. Proclaim this 8th day of May, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
All right. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This proclamation is now adopted. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure. I don't have anything elegant prepared, as our previous speakers had, but now, just on behalf of the Patent Township Police Department, our officers really appreciate the board taking the time to recognize, again, as this says, the sacrifices and the services that we provide to the community. You know, we have a fantastic police department. I'm proud of them each and every single day. Great guys and girls working for us. So, again, we just appreciate the board's time in recognizing us for this. So, thank you very much.
We are truly honored. Our police force has definitely been the star of Patent Township. Your officers have gone above and beyond so many times, then that this board and our community truly appreciates the time, efforts, sacrifices that they do each and every day. And now that we have our new four-legged officer, we're looking forward to great things. All right?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Next on the agenda is our Public Works, and that will be read by?
I'll read it.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so proclaiming May 19th to 25th as National Public Works Week, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Patent Township. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Patent Township to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby designate the week, May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Proclaim this 8th day of May, 2024.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This motion is now approved. Kim, would you like to say a few words about your?
I guess really the biggest thing is, I would just like to thank you and thank, you know, for the supervisors, for the support they do provide, the Public Works Department here. I want to thank the community for the support they do give us, as well as ask the community to take an extra couple of minutes, because yes, we are slowing them up and we're doing projects. And we'll get you through, whether it's the Water Authority, the Sewer Authority, the Power Company, Patent Township Public Works, or PENDO. We will get you through the project, but please give us a little bit of time to be careful so that we don't have any issues.
Thank you. Also, I would like to just reiterate the slow down law, that as we're going into the holidays, please slow down for our police, our fire, our EMS, our Public Works, our tow truck, tow truck drivers as well. It's so important that we take a moment to remember those who have lost their lives last month, the road crew. I just want to, again, extend our thoughts and prayers to their families. But as we're moving into the holiday, please remember to slow down. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Betsy?
Yeah. So, I'm about to read about a service that none of us likes to encounter personally, but that all of us is very grateful exists and, in fact, runs so well. And I see we have somebody joining us remotely. Welcome, Sean. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care for those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving abilities. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week, May 19th to 25th, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 50th anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, Honoring Our Past, Forging Our Future. Proclaimed this day, May 8th, 2024.
Can I get a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The proclamation, May 19th, Emergency Management Services Week, has been adopted. Sean, if you're on, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Pam. Just on behalf of the Emergency Medical Community, we say thank you to the township and thank you for your continued support. I'll pass along the proclamation to the individuals within the EMS community and let them know that they have your continued support.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-640, amending the parks ordinance to permit through bike traffic. Amy, would you like to give an update?
Sure, thanks. So, at your last meeting, you heard a presentation from Center Bike and from Susan Wheeler, our project manager, about wanting to allow bicyclists to travel through our parks at night. Currently, our regulations do not allow for such activity, and the board expressed its support for that, so we have to ratify that through an ordinance.
This calls for a public hearing. I now open the public hearing up. Any comments, concerns, or feedback on this ordinance?
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Fedor Sinov. I'm a resident of Park Forest Village here in Patent Township. I'd like to speak in support of this ordinance on simply the basis of freedom, justice, and equality, and I will elaborate why. You know, I believe people have a right to travel bicycle wherever they want, unimpeded, providing they're not breaking the law. We have the same standard for vehicles, so I believe it's just, it's just a matter of fairness, you know? And I don't think we should punish bicyclists by making them take potentially more unsafe roads than they otherwise should encounter, you know? And we, we probably want more people to cycle, you know? We, we don't want unnecessary car trips. And cars, cars are free to travel wherever they want, provided they're not breaking the law. We should have the same standard for bicyclists and pedestrians, traversing through places without causing any problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments at this time? Amy, anyone?
Nobody answered.
Okay. I now close the public portion. Are there any comments from our Board of Supervisor at this time regarding this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2024-640, amending parks ordinance to permit through bicycle traffic? Elliot?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ordinance has passed. Thank you. And thank you. All right. All right. Next on the agenda is the 2025-2029 COG Capital Improvement Program.
So, I'll kick this off, and then we have members of COG staff here, Kimberly, the finance director's here to do a presentation, and then Larry will also be offering his opinions as well, his thoughts. So, as recommended by the COG Facilities and Finance Committees, the Executive Committee received and forwarded the COG Capital Improvement Plan to the Center Region Municipalities for review and comment. The information contained in that capital improvement plan is based on recommendations from the facility condition assessments, age condition of equipment, and newer replacement vehicles or equipment added or needed. The recommendations will be included in the program plan. We have to have our comments back to the COG Executive Director and the Finance Director by May 16th. I did include a copy of the comment guide within your packet, and certainly we can make comments on anything. But I'd like to introduce Kimberly from the COG staff. She's their finance director, and she's going to give you a presentation on the CIP itself.
Okay, welcome, Kimberly.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, township staff. Thank you for the opportunity to receive feedback on the COG Capital Plan for 2025 to 2029. I am joined in person this evening by Kristy Owens, who is the park director, the fire protection director, Sean Kaufman, is online, and I believe there is a library board meeting tonight, which prevents Lisa Reeves-Collins and Eric Nornberg from joining us. That being said?
But we have, we do have somebody here.
I'm sorry?
Nathaniel.
Nathaniel's here. Thank you. Thank you. So, what we are, what we sent to you was the Capital Improvement Plan for 2025 to 2029. You noticed that there is a bit of a format change. We tried to make it a little more transparent and a little bit easier to read in the development of that for the forthcoming five years. The focus, of course, being 2025, which is the year on deck. A couple of assumptions I wanted to share with you. We took the general forum values to heart when we prioritized and made lists through the agency directors, and those principles were very much an active part of a lot of what we prioritized internally when we put the CIP together. In the future years, there is an assumption of a 3% inflation depreciation factor. That's consistent with prior years. That is a number that, as I get more comfortable in my role, that that number could change. We could modify that. But in order to be consistent with those of you that are familiar with the Capital Improvement Plan, we wanted to keep that number intact going forward for now. And a correction that I have learned, that I made to the final, when this is eventually published, is that in the past, our debt service has been represented as part of our capital plan, and I've learned that the appropriate place for that is on the operating budget. So, in the past, we are servicing two debts right now. We've got a pools debt, which is about $415,000, and we've got a regional parks debt, which is about $435,000. And the pools has been included in the CIP in the past, but the regional parks has not. I'm going to correct that going forward. So, right now, the municipal shares are slightly overstated by the inclusion of the pools debt, and we'll fix that, we'll fix that going forward. But I wanted to call that out, because I think that is something that we need to make sure we focus on in the detailed budget, but it is not appropriate to carry it forward in the capital plan. A few key drivers, one of the changes that we made to this document was to classify our capital in terms of additions, replacements, and improvements. And we've got a number of replacement items that are driving this particular plan. The fire protection is looking at apparatus replacement in 2025 and 2026. That is a significant amount of money. That equipment has been on order, and as you know, there have been a lot of supply chain issues, but it is time. So, if you have questions on that, I'm sure Sean can speak to that. Also, parks and pools is looking at equipment replacement. And then there are a few items on the COG building that are still under review. It came to my attention that the parking lot and the HVAC are significant investments, and we're working with a few people that have been with the COG for a long time, that have some history of that infrastructure. So, those numbers are not yet firm. They're big numbers, and I'm sure that there are ways, as we explore this further, to mitigate that. But just to... But just to make you aware that we're aware, that they are, they are certainly big numbers to be considered. In line with this replace, replace, improve, add additions, something that we have thought about a lot is creating repair and maintenance programs that coincide with additions and significant replacements. To keep in line with one of the values, which was take care of what we have, we believe in finance, we certainly believe that we can extend the life of a lot of these assets past the warranty period, as long as we have a strong repair or maintenance plan in place. So instead of an asset being placed onto the CIP because the warranty expired, that asset might have another seven or eight years of useful life if it's properly taken care of, and we want to make sure that we pay a little bit closer attention to that. Is it really out of warranty and that's why we need to replace it, or has the asset materially, materially been compromised, you know, through its use? So we are working closely with the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee to collect this information and develop better models so that we have access to fleet management and facilities and dates of service for a lot of the equipment that we have. Briefly, and then I'll be done, I put together just two slides, the, the deck that I, that I sent over includes a number of slides that are already in the CIP, so I'm not going to go over those, you've seen them, and, and if you have questions on them, that's fine. But this first slide, the numbers here, I just did a graphic for each of the municipalities to show the actual approved 2021 to 2024 CIP budgets, and then the blue stripe at the very end is the proposed CIP. I have those numbers in front of me, and one thing that I, that I did, and I feel like I can improve upon it, was in the deck, this particular slide here includes regional parks, but the actual year-over-year that is in, I believe it was in the CIP, did not. So a few people have asked me, how come the numbers look different? For example, 2024 for Patton Township, not including regional parks, was about $344,000. Including regional parks, it goes to 466. In 2025, the proposal without regional parks is 363,000, and with regional parks, 489. That's about $23,000 year-over-year if, with the inclusion of regional parks, which is about a 4.9% increase. If you do the math, without the regional parks in '24 and the regional parks in '25, it's a heart attack number, so I just wanted to make sure that, what I'd like to do going forward for the final, is I'm going to do two more slides where the apples are apples and the oranges are oranges, so I'll make that clear when I make that distribution. The next slide is a slide, this is some information that the Finance Directors have shared with me in the past. This, this information has been presented in terms of COG expenditure, municipal shares to the COG compared to the municipalities', tax revenue, tax base, the municipalities' overall expenditures, just to give a sense of scope where COG takes money. I am going to improve upon this, I would like to have them fully developed for the detailed budget rollout. This was an example of what it looks like when you compare the COG to the municipality, but I'm going to finesse it. But I just, you know, thank you to Mr. Pegar and the, a lot of the Finance Directors for resurrecting this and asking me to continue to do it, because this snapshot, I think, is a very easy way to identify where we fall within the overall scope of your expense. And that concludes my narrative at this time.
Thank you Kim. I guess I'm, I'm going to refer this over to our Director of Finance, I know he might have some questions.
Well, first of all, Kimberly, thank you for mentioning that correction and the fact that it's not 42% increase, but a 4.9% increase. I'll take my nitroglycerin pills and put the pad on.
I'm so sorry.
So I don't have a heart attack. I want to say first of all that the, the, the CIP looks really good. I like the changes that were made to it, I think it's a nice product.
Thank you.
And I said that, my comments to the board earlier this afternoon, and those comments basically talked about the 42%, so that's, that's done, we don't have to worry about that. But talked about three items in general. For Sean's, for Sean Kaufman's benefit, I'm not going to talk about his apparatus, because I expected his apparatus to come down, and the way we handle fire apparatus is, seems to be different in the COG than we handle other things. Okay, we prepare for the fire apparatus. The fire apparatus, we know, is going to last us 20 years, and we're putting away money every year in anticipation so we don't get caught with a $2 million apparatus cost in year 20, so we're putting money away. So I think we ought to look at, at that, at that approach for other things. You know, in looking down the line, this CIP is a five-year CIP, and looking at year five, there might be something coming in year five that we might want to start in covering funds for in year one, so that when we get to year five, we don't have a spike in the amount of money that the municipalities have to put up. So, three items that came, that popped out at me was, one, the parking lot. The parking lot, I understand that, you know, three years ago, we, we repaired and sealed the parking lot, and it saved us three years, and that was great. Unfortunately, in those three years, we never thought, well, let's, let's put some money away to repave the parking lot, because we knew repaving the parking lot was coming down the pike, so we should have been proactive in that. We haven't been. My suggestion would be, since we weren't proactive in putting the money upfront, let's try to spread out the cost by splitting the, the parking lot and paving, half of it in one year, half of it in the next year, break it into threes, I don't care, something that will, will help us with the, the hit of $150,000. And when I look at these numbers, of course, I'm looking at Patton Township's 20%, whatever number is out there, we're 20%, so that's $30,000, you know, of that has got to come out of my, my general fund, so. The other two, unfortunately for, for Kristi, are, are all in the, in the parks are wrecked. And one of them is the All-Season Pavilion, and my, my email, my comment of the All-Season Pavilion is a couple of decisions. First decision is, I think we should decide, is the All-Season Pavilion what we need? Okay, is it, is it a four All-Season Pavilion, is it a three-season Pavilion, is, you know, what exactly do we need so that, or do we need, I, I would, I take, I would assume we need a pavilion, because you're going to have something for, for picnics, at least in the summertime. I mean, you're not going to have a park without having a pavilion. I'm not against having a pavilion, I think we ought to look at what pavilion works best for us. And then we ought to look at, how can we fund that pavilion, and when does that pavilion go in? Do we need that pavilion this year? Do we need that pavilion, can we, can we stretch it out to next year? What, what exactly do we need with that pavilion? And obviously, I, I know that there's some, some funding, some, some awarded grants out there for this pavilion, what do we need to do? What's the minimum we need to do to maintain those grants and the timing of that? So I think more information is needed on the, on the pavilion. Okay? Finally, is, is something that, that's been around, you know, well, I, I visited the old Hess softball fields, restrooms, so, so I remember fondly the old restrooms. But the new restrooms have been a discussion since, you know, 2015, when I was, when I started, so 2011, because Amy, you know, she's much older than I am, she doesn't remember way back. I am not against, I, restrooms need to go into Hess Park. We just probably should be a little bit more creative, what, what, what is the best type of restroom we could put in there? Maybe push back, well, I know that code is telling us to put a number of, of facilities inside that restroom, we might have to revisit that. And, and revisit, like I said, the type, so we can look at the cost and try to get something. I'm assuming that nobody wants to donate money and put their name on a restroom, so I'm not going to ask for that. But yeah, I, I think that we can do something in looking at the restroom, but the restrooms definitely have to be done. The other thing is, maybe we look at the tournament fees that we're charging to see if we can, some increased tournament fees to offset the cost of the restroom. So other than that, I think a lot of the other things with the library, with the replacement of fleet and code, with the replacement of the fleet in fire, I thi, I think it's, it's not, and with it being a 4.9% increase, it's not an unreasonable increase in the, in, there's just, we have to be a little bit more creative in, in some of the bigger items. The bigger items that, it's definitely going to pop out on the page to, to any elected official, I would think, so. That, those are my comments, basically explaining my comments to the email to the board, so.
Thank you.
And I, or Kimberly, I'm sure, or Kristi, we're, we're more than welcome, we're more than happy to answer any questions.
Kristi, you've heard that part, and Kim, you have any, any comments to our Director of Finance?
Yeah, why don't you take those two?
Thank you. So, I can certainly appreciate these questions, I think they're really good questions, and I apologize, I didn't put enough meat into the context of the notes, I think that would have been helpful, so that's something I took as a note from this and from some other meetings as well. But in general, I'll start with Hess first. So Hess is, as Amy knows, outside the sewer boundary, so that provides a lot of challenges with just doing kind of a brick and mortar building and connecting to public sewer. The water connection, as you pointed out, we do have a water line connection that runs through the center of the park, which is great, so we can tap into water, but there are limited options as far as like these dry volt systems, wet volt systems, so we are looking at a dry volt, or a wet volt system, so that we have handwashing sinks and flushable toilets, because I think smell is also something that we're really conscious of, because this is in a community park. A lot of the tournaments that we have out there are not necessarily people that are outside the area, so we know we have a lot of residents on these teams that live in Center Region and really want to have this amenity, and so, to your point, yes, absolutely, we would be looking at adjusting our tournament fees to accommodate for these fees that are this large expense that we're anticipating. But right now, we are working through codes to kind of determine how many restrooms we need. The price that you see in here, that price tag is based on an estimate that I received from a company that does a dry volt system. That dry volt system was roughly around $400,000, but knowing that we have to bring in additional trades to connect our plumbing fixtures and our electrical and things like that, and the water connections, we, we put that up at $600,000, knowing we also need to provide like handicap parking potentially and a sidewalk to it, so that $600,000 was a pretty good swag at it, but again, we'll have more refined costs as we talk through numbers from codes. That estimate is also for a six-bathroom restroom, we currently have seven porta-johns out there right now. So that's a little bit of the background, hopefully answered those questions on Hess.
That's great.
And as far as the All-Season Pavilion, again, another project that's still in the preliminary phase, we just finished Phase One, and that's what our big focus has been on, but the All-Season Pavilion was part of the Phase One development of, or part of the land development plan for Whitehall, but was reduced whenever we reduced the scope and reduced the cost. So that's something that we have, the prior director worked on fundraising for that project throughout the process in hopes that that project would be next. I definitely see a challenge there, because we have a grant that's open that we have not made any action on, and that's been sitting since 2023. So we have donors that we have to respond to as well, that gave a private donation for the All-Season Pavilion, and some naming rights as well, so those are some challenges that we're maneuvering through right now. As far as the need for a picnic pavilion at Whitehall, absolutely, we have no shade, there's no place for all of these kids and families to come out for tournaments and games and to walk the park, there's nowhere shaded to have a picnic and sit down, so that was, I think, some of the, the thinking behind it, which is why you saw it on the master plan. But of course, this grand plan that was originally proposed was a All-Season Pavilion with garage doors that rolled up, it was, had a concession stand in it and everything, had a lot of bells and whistles that I just don't think that we need. We really just need to provide a covered space to get people out of the weather, get them out of the elements, and provide a nice, safe space. We looked at options for an indoor facility versus a just standard picnic pavilion with a concession on the end. To get a prefab kit for that, you're looking at a more reasonable cost, we're not exploring a facility with HVAC and all of that, because I think the cost is really going to be driven way too high for that. So we'll have those costs hopefully in the next two, three weeks from a vendor that we're working with, to get you more of a refined dollar amount as we work into the budget. So I just wanted to give that, that background.
That would be great. And when do we have to start tapping into that grant? Do you know, is it by the end of 2024?
Well, they've been very patient, she schedules bi-weekly meetings with me as project updates, and she's very in tune to these meetings, discussions on the regional parks loan and the extension of that, prioritizing what project is that going to money, that money going to be used for, so she's been really polite, and, and I think that that's eventually at some point going to run out.
Yes.
But they would really like to see some progress this year. First step is hiring a consultant, and I think that would appease them if we could get to that step, so that's kind of where we're at in the process with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Kristi or Kim? Kim, and Kristi, I know Larry and myself will be seeing you personally tomorrow morning. Looking forward to it. If you have anything else to say. If not, have a good, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Pam, can I just ask, are you okay if I submit Larry's comments as your comments on the CIP?
Yes. Supervisor Avon?
Basically, in summary then, what we decided is that many people in the area work all day and toilet night. day and toilet night, and we're not flush with cash, but we need not to have the thing work. So.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is public safety. There are no items. After that, we have public work operations, no items. Engineering, planning, and zoning, there are no items. Administration, no items. Consent agenda.
No items?
I heard no items.
I'm sorry.
Larry's getting excited.
Did I say that too loud?
Yes, I heard that. Is there any items or item on the consent agenda that the Board would like to discuss or remove at this time? CNN, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
The, um, motion to approve? The agenda?
I'll move.
All right.
Elliot, Dave, and Susan.
Second?
We got the motion second. We just got to
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is managers report.
I don't want to slow up the thunder, right? We're moving kind of fast now. But just two things. One is, we are actively recruiting members to be on our Planning Commission. We have one full-time member that position that is open, and then two alternate positions on the Planning Commission. And then also, we're looking for someone to join our Open Space Stewardship Committee. Betsy goes to those meetings and can tell you how much fun we have at those.
They actually are great fun, anybody listening.
Yeah. So if you have an interest in open space and you use those properties, we'd love to have you apply for both of those positions. And then lastly, we are gearing up, and maybe Ken, if you want to give an update on the spongy moth spraying and kind of where we're at.
We are actively monitoring the hatch as well as the leaf-out on the oak trees. I know, I recently just talked with the applicator early in the week, so it won't be too long. We will be looking at spraying. Unfortunately, looking at the weather forecast, one thing that can be problematic is rain events. Like to have a long enough time period for the material to dry on the trees after it's applied. So, and the rest of this week doesn't look real good, and some of the next.
Okay. Amy, I have only two questions. I know both Susan, yourself and I weren't able to attend the Park Board school. Have you heard anything else on that?
Yes. So a couple of things have happened. I did attend the Steering Committee meeting for Susan, and there, those meetings are interesting because it's a lot of talk about what would go in the school itself, and the teachers are involved in that. But there was some discussion about having another access point, and then I got an email from Randy Brown, who's the business administrator for the school, on Monday night. And the school district actually moved forward with buying the piece of property to the right of Little Lion Drive. So they're purchasing that property for, I forget what it was, one, one something million dollars, 1.6, 1.4. So that, they've actually then requested some additional information from us as they're looking at the site itself. So it seems like that may help with some of the access concerns, right? Because that would provide another access way. They are also in the process of, they got their traffic counts done before Penn State went out of session, because we require you to count when Penn State's still in session, and they are working on the traffic impact study for that.
Okay. Can can the Board copy that as well? And as we're moving forward, can we also have Susan Willer on that as well?
Yes, Susan Willer's been involved with that at every step of the way. She's been, she has all the history, so she's been a great advisor on the history. And yeah, I did update her as to what has happened this week, and she was the one who's providing information to ELA.
Great.
So, yes.
Can the Board get a copy of that report as well?
The traffic study's not done yet.
Oh, okay. But just meeting, meeting with the Board, just give us a short update.
Yes, as it moves forward. I don't know that what, much is going to happen over the summer because they're kind of working on these various studies and things, but I think when the fall comes, things will probably start to ramp up.
Oh, okay. But as far as we are here, just give us an update, if you can, have a written update so we'll know exactly.
Oh, yeah, I can include that with the agenda because Susan is our rep to the Steering Committee, so you can make sure that's included with the agenda.
Okay. And the second thing is, have you heard anything more on the Megabus location piece?
I have heard nothing. I have asked. I've asked repeatedly, and I've not heard that anything is changing at this point.
Is State College still looking at?
The Borough Manager told me, yes, that they are, but it's a long-term project with Penn State with the bus station, so I'm not quite sure what's going to happen there. I know that that's been discussed for quite a while, but I did ask him to keep me updated for you.
Okay, I appreciate it. I know the new planner, I just want to make sure they're in the mix of anything moving forward to definitely let our township know, you know, as far as where that relocation is going to be and how soon.
Yeah, I think it's a couple of years off.
Oh, okay.
That would be my understanding from my conversations.
Okay.
That if it happens, it'll be a couple of years off.
Okay, great. Because I was writing, the Megabus drivers had no clue. And they're like, what happens is, they'll go in to get the bus, and that's when they'll find out the location has moved. So I'm going to stay on top of that. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Is that all for your report?
That's all.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the committee reports. Any Board member would like to add to their committee report? The only thing I know, for May 14, our public safety meeting has been put back on, we had canceled it. Due to the Penn State agreement for the fire program, we will be meeting May 14. And on the 29, we will be doing the tour of the LifeLink Center and meeting with the County Commissioner. So I'll have a double report on that.
And did you see my email follow-up to your voicemail about touring the facility, the Center County Public Safety facility? Maybe that should go through the COG.
Oh.
You had reached out about wanting to set up a tour, and I think that's something that perhaps all the elected officials in the region could benefit from.
Um, yeah, okay.
So maybe take that through public safety.
As well. And Chief, I know we have talked about it as well as doing, not only for the municipalities, but I would really like for our Board to, if they're able, to do that with Chief and the gentleman you said?
Mark Keller. He's the coordinator at the site. Yeah, he's willing to do it anytime.
Okay, fine. Thank you. All right. Any other report on committee reports? CNN, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Whitman.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I don't think it's on the list, the search committee, I just wanted to update people on that.
Okay.
We started out with about 34 applications, and we, actually, today in long meeting, narrowed, we've had various calling sessions, but today, we narrowed it down to six people who will be brought in via Zoom for an interview with the search committee. And then from there, we will narrow it down to two or three people who will be brought in physically for an interview system. So I just thought I would give people an update there.
Okay. Do we have any idea how long that might be? Are we looking?
The largest challenge is our schedules, our respective schedules, getting that together. But we, oh, people may not, ladies and gentlemen, remember, but Eric Norenberg has a drop dead date when he's retiring. He's agreed to come on part-time. Adam, to fill in a gap, if we have a gap and we haven't hired somebody. And then Adam Brumba from College Township has also agreed to step up full-time if need be. And Becca Pettit is also going to be filling in sometime. So the sooner that we can get somebody on board, obviously, the better, but we can't rush. We don't want to rush, really.
Okay.
But we're working as fast as our schedules will allow us.
Okay. And we thank the search committee truly for taking this on. All right. Any other committee report? And CNN, next is other business. And if there's no other business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Uh-huh.
Is that a uh-huh for yes?
I think we can just adjourn without a second, but yeah.
Well, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want to thank everyone. This meeting is now adjourned.
All right, thank you.